Okay, everybody all set? We'll call our meeting to order. Goodness. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and through the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It's nice to be comfortable, but this is really strange. We will start with communications from the public. I don't see anyone here from the public, so I think we're good to go there. Next is board correspondence. I don't believe we had, well, no, that is not true. We do have some board correspondence. We were notified recently of another Champions of Change Award that the district was awarded by the New York State School Boards Association. It's one of their recognition programs for programs in schools that are innovative in some way. And the program that was awarded was the food service program. Ron, you have anything to add to that?
So we will actually be doing the presentation. We'll do the presentation on Tuesday at one o'clock so that our cafeteria staff can be here to accept that as well.
And I think, Ashley, did you send invitations to the board for that? I think you did, yes. So if you can, if you can be here, that's a, that's a good one to attend. Yes, Wayne Rogers from, from our area representative for NISBA will be here to make that presentation. So that takes care of the board correspondence that I'm aware of. Next is information and reports. And we'll start with the report from the policy committee meetings, the last couple of them. Jodell, if you would, please.
So, policy council meeting we had in May. We reviewed policy series eight thousand. Policy eighty-two forty, we, it was a draft and we were going to introduce adding the sudden cardiac arrest section. The other policies, eighty-two twenty, eighty-two thirty, eighty-two forty, eighty-two forty-two, eighty-two forty-three, eighty-two sixty and eighty-two seventy were all review only. Eighty-two forty-four, we reviewed and recommend that we rescind this policy. And eighty-two fifty, we reviewed and said to change the language approval of. From our June meeting, we continued with the policy review of the eight thousand series. Eighty-two seventy-one, we discussed, it's an existing policy, but we recommended removing the first sentence in the section and re-adopt the policy. And this is also the policy that we are currently committed to. Eighty-two eighty, eighty-three ten were review only. Eighty-three twenty, which includes textbooks, library materials and instructional materials. It was updated in twenty-twenty-two, so it was a review only. Eighty-three thirty was review only. Eighty-three thirty-two, we recommended to rescind this due to a redundancy of eighty-three sixty, which provides the same language and more. And this is the policy on curriculum areas in conflict with religious beliefs. Eighty-three forty, it was review only. Eighty-three fifty, review only. Eighty-three sixty was the one we asked to rescind. Eighty-four ten, school calendar and school year. We recommended to rescind this policy eighty-four ten because it's not an active practice as part as this follows the BOSI school calendar. And the last review only was eighty-four twenty for opening exercises.
Thank you, Jodell. Any questions from the policy or of the policy committee report? Thanks again. Next, we'll move on to the Student Ex officio report, which is the last one for Elise Hoxey.
So tonight, I have to just say thank you to the board for this opportunity that you've given me. I've learned a lot about the district and I just hope that the board continues to move on with things that I've mentioned this year. Cause I know I've mentioned a lot of steps that are big steps and they can't be taken with the year. So I just hope that I've set a foundation for you and Isabel to continue with next year. And I would also like to introduce Isabel, who is going to be our student ex officio for next year. So Isabel was born in Potstam. She attended Trinity until first grade and then she attended Nightingale. She's an active participant in the community. She has danced at Tap to Toe for two years. She's involved in the musicals. She is a member of the select choral groups. And she worked at the Messina Arena and she now works at the Town Beach. She is, also has student government experience. She is the president of student council. She is a member of both national and French national honor societies. And she was on the student committee to interview for the superintendent. And she rewrote policy seven-three-one-two, which was the dress code. And she helped enact the policy in our schools. So she is very fit for the job and she's gonna do great, so. Thank you again for this opportunity.
Well, welcome aboard, Isabel. We're looking forward to having you join us next year, for sure. And as we send you, push you out the door, Elise, on behalf of the board, I want to thank you for the tremendous input that you gave to, and perspective that you gave to, you know, what we hear about what's going on within the schools from the student perspective. It's, it's extremely valuable to us. And you did a marvelous job of representing the student body on the board. And you did a great job of making sure that we knew what the student perspective was. And we would like to offer you a token. I'll, let me just, let me make sure that the people out there know what this says. It says, presented to Elise Hoxey with sincere thanks for your contributions to the Board of Education as student ex officio for the twenty-three-twenty-four school year. Enjoy Oswego.
I will.
Elise is headed to Oswego. And Isabel, again, we're looking forward to getting your perspective on things and hearing your reports from the high school as, and from the district, really, as things progress next year. Moving on to my part of the agenda, the president's report. We do have to act on this evening, a school year twenty-four-twenty-five meeting schedule. Pretty much everything is the way it has been. We'll be meeting on the, generally speaking anyway, the third Thursday of the month with a couple of exceptions. And if there are any problems with those dates, we certainly have the ability to change them if they, if those changes are made enough in advance. Sort of related to that, the date for the reorganizational meeting for the Board of Education is July ninth. So we'll be meeting back here in just a couple of weeks. Maybe not here, but maybe here. The next thing that I have is just a, an appeal to my fellow board members. The New York State School Boards Association has really what I think is a terrific summer workshop series in Albany on July twenty-ninth, sorry, July nineteenth through the twentieth. It's the Leadership and Education Event. I was privileged to attend this last year. It was great networking. The presentations and the workshops were excellent. It's quite cost-effective as well for the district to send us. I am going to be, myself, going to the Rural Schools Association Conference in Lake Placid that following weekend. So I, I think it would be great if one of you folks would attend the Leadership and Education Event. It's well worth your time, well worth the, the registration fee for the district as well. And there's a link to the agenda and so forth on your Board of Education agenda. The next thing that I had was the, sort of an analysis of the, our board's self-evaluation. I'm going to forego doing any sort of presentation on that tonight. I was contemplating doing sort of a shortened version of it, but we've got plenty of other things to discuss tonight. So I think we're, I did send you all an email with all of that information linked. And you can look at that at your leisure, and I certainly hope that you will. There are some things, most things, we seem to be thinking that we're doing pretty well. There are a couple of things that we can work on if we analyze some of that data a little bit. And the last thing that I had planned to do tonight was to, to go through the, the Board of Education goals and sort of tick off an assessment of those. And I'm also gonna forego that tonight because of some of the other things that we have on a fairly packed agenda. So that's all I have. And we'll move on now to Mr. Burke and the reports of administration.
So actually, I'm gonna be turning much of my session over to Mrs. Charleston, who's gonna begin talking about Parent Square.
Communication tools that engages families with their school communications, anywhere from district communications to classroom communications, all in one place. And the reason we went with Parent Square is as we were working on our educational technology and making sure that they're ed-la-tudi compliant. And we started really looking into what everyone across the district was using. We found out multiple platforms were being used for communication tools. So things like School Messenger, Remind, Class Dojo, all here, and some social media platforms, just to name a few. So in regards to the, the family's perspective, this makes it hard to navigate information when it's kind of coming from all different places, especially if you have multiple children in different buildings. And so the goal of the district was really to kind of clean this up and find one platform that can meet all of our needs. So currently, ten out of the eighteen school districts in the county use Parent Square. So that's where we started. And after just a couple demonstrations with the administrative team and then also our district technology team, it really seemed that Parent Square fit all of our needs. So we will have training, optional training for staff over the summer and then also time on opening days embedded in there for them to learn more about Parent Square, as well as at the ready-for-school. I'm gonna have a table set up and we'll help families set things up on their end. So I'll walk you through Parent Square. And at the end, if you have any questions, let me know. So again, Parent Square is one central tool. It's a two-way parent engagement. It talks about translations. As we get families that speak another language, it does have a communication tool that can translate those, those conversations. And it's available through text, email, the app and voice control as well. So I'll give you an example. If we send out a message at the district level of a snow day, a parent will get a text message, they will get an email as well as a phone call just from being, just from having the Parent Square app. So if they get a communication from their classroom teacher, it will come up on, in that same format, but it will have a little circle that will say their initials. So the person receiving it knows exactly where it's coming from. So as a parent, I use it on my end, my school, or my students' school uses Parent Square. And so if I receive a message on my phone that it's a snow day, that's coming from the superintendent, I'll have an email as well as a phone call occur. Then the next day, I may have some reminder that my daughter has select choir. And so the initials in that little circle will change. It's coming from the chorus teacher. But again, on the family side, the parent side, it's all one place. Same text message, same email. I may have, a few days later, get another notification from my son's modified lacrosse coach. Again, same text, same email, same platform. So it really just kind of cleans up all the communications so families are not burdened by having multiple apps and having to keep track of, of multiple things. So there is a quick video that kind of summarizes it and it does it in two minutes. So I'll show that. Chris, I don't hear a sound on it. That's okay. Wonderful.
Parents are busy and they're getting school information from everywhere. Teacher apps, school texts, email newsletters, district calls, backpack flyers. Too many methods, too many places to look. Schools don't know if they're getting through all this clutter and noise. Who is saying what? If family contact information is current and who's not being reached? Wouldn't it be better if everything was in one place? So you and your families could be sure nothing and no one is missed? It's time to get organized, to get unified. Welcome to Parent Square. Parent Square unifies family communications from the district office to the classroom, all in a single platform. From district-wide alerts to individual parent-teacher messages, Parent Square's communications tools are built to work together, not piece together. Staff have to learn only one system. Parents find everything in one account. It's more than messages. It's also school services that rely on two-way communications, like filling out forms, scheduling conferences, excusing absences and responding to progress reports. All fully integrated so parents can reply by web or app and miss nothing. Administrators also miss nothing. Usage and participation reports let them know who's not being reached and help improve communications equity. And they can trust contacts and messages will stay private and secure. Schools also increase engagement and family connections with Parent Square's unique ability to verify and flag updates to contact details. Parents can pick preferred ways of being reached and use any of their phone numbers or email addresses to log in. That gives parents control and schools confidence important messages make it through. With Parent Square, schools get a unified communications platform that saves time. They stay in touch with families easily and consistently. Parents have just one login account to find information and communicate with schools and teachers. They're more satisfied and involved. Parent Square, all of your family interactions in one place.
So that's a quick overview. And one thing they did hit on that is nice on the staff side is we can see participation data. So sometimes when we give information, we don't actually, you know, we're hoping it reaches one hundred percent. But unless that family, that if they call us when they move and they change their address or their email address or their phone number, oftentimes, we're, we're sending it to old information using School Tool. So what this shows us on the backend is if we send out a message and only eighty-eight percent actually reach that, we'll be able to see that. And then the hope is we'll work with our clerical staff and reach out and update and get more updated information of our families, especially some of our families that are, are a little more transient. So we're excited about that piece as well. So on the screen, it does have website capabilities, which we did not, we decided not to go with the website end. But on the right-hand side, you can see what it looks like on a phone screen, basically. So we are doing over here, this is what it would look like on your phone when you receive those messages. When a teacher goes in, this is how their, their platform looks. They can do posts, they can do their own newsletters. So right now, we're using, as an admin team, smores, which we won't be using. We'll be going to Parent Square. Classroom newsletters will all go through Parent Square as well as those direct messages. So feel free to explore Parent Square. If you Google it, there is YouTube videos. You can kind of just play around with it and learn a little bit more. Right now, currently, we have purchased Parent Square and Mike Allen and his IT team are actually building it on the backend. And it's going to talk to School Tool every night. So it will have that information updated. So we're building it and then we're going to create the training sessions this summer and also for opening day. So we're hoping for our full implementation this fall. And that's just a quick overview of Parent Square and I welcome any questions.
Nicole, thank you. I think this is, a unified communications platform is something I feel we've needed for a long time. As someone, as a parent who's, you know, had probably three or four apps with different teachers with their recommendations. I'm capable to learn them all, but I'm just one person. I don't know how everybody else feels. But I was just wondering, is this something that we're gonna have to set a requirement for, for our teachers? That everyone's gonna use? Is everyone going to use Parent Square? Is that gonna be the, the requirement per se or recommendation?
Yes, no, it will be the requirement and we've already communicated that out. We chose to go through our district technology team because there's different stakeholders from all five buildings. And when they started learning about it, they instantly were like, yes, this is what we've been needing. They're feeling the same thing. They're feeling kind of all over the place as well and wanting to communicate and feeling frustrated by not necessarily having the best avenue at their fingertips right now. And I will say extracurriculars, that was a big feedback as well is things that are happening after school. They didn't have a great avenue to connect with their groups of students, whether it's athletics or chorus or what, anything that's happening after school. So we're trying to just really build, right now, Mike and Allen and his team, we're working with all of those groups as well. So we're really just hoping everybody, not hoping, this is what we're going to be doing. I need to change my language. This is what we will be doing in the fall.
Sounds great, thanks. When, and when is the target date for implementation?
Full implementation, we're hoping, hoping September. So the goal is with the company right now, in May and June, we've been building it behind the scenes. July, we're hoping the admin team will be trained and get, be able to get in and explore and play around. And then August will be all the staff training. If, and of course, summer, it's optional, but we're going to leave intentional time on opening days so that we're ready to go full force right in September. We will actually, we didn't renew some of the other apps that we've been using previously. For example, Remind. And so those that were using Remind, they, they, they understand that, they know that. It's changed, so it will be new and we'll, we'll need time to transition. There are a lot of features in Parent Square and we're going to start with just the basic communication if we can get everybody in there and doing the newsletter. And the bells and whistles will learn as we go with that.
So Mr. Burke, you'll be using Parent Square for board updates as well?
That's correct, yes.
And the bells and whistle, I will like explain one of them. Field trips, permission slips can even go through there. So that won't be something initially that we're looking at, but that was something that teachers were, wow, that would be so easy. Because, you know, families have the device right in the hand. Yes, I give permission and it's done. And then we're not tracking down. So that's just like one little thing that, that can come from it. We looked at latch key payments. Like, so there's a lot that can go through this app, but we're going to start with just general communication to begin with.
So when you have to set this up with the parents, they have to give you their information if they haven't already. And then do they have the ability to give you a home phone or just cell phone?
So right now, everything is already in School Tool for our current students. And when new students enroll, they complete that information. And so that's why it's important that it talks to School Tool every single night it syncs. So say we get a new family in the middle of October, the next day, that information will be part of School Tool and Parent Square. So as they're coming in, that's, that's the important part. That was another piece of why we really liked Parent Square because it already talked to School Tool that we're using.
Oh.
I think there was a second part of your question, I apologize.
Just home or, can they only be linked to cell or can it be linked to home?
That is a great question. I'd have to look into that. Everything that they showed was really about text message.
Yeah.
But remember, you're also getting an email and a phone call. So the phone call, it's whichever is listed first as the primary contact. But we can also in School Tool put multiple contacts, so it speaks. So for example, my children, I would get a text and so would their father, right? So you can be deliberate in that as well.
Oh.
And those are, we are sure there will be kinks and those are the things that we're gonna have to iron out. But overall, we're pretty excited about the transition.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions?
Will this replace like our newsletter communication? So I know like Ron and Ashley and our administrators and secretaries like to use, I think it's smore, right? To send out all the newsletters. Is that gonna replace that or is that gonna be continued a preference?
Yes, we actually did not renew smores either. And we talked about that as an admin team. And we just said, if we're expecting this change overall, then we need to model that as well and we're going to be a little uncomfortable. And the great thing about Parent Square on the backend that our administrative team noticed right away is when we had the demo, they said they built it. So it looks like email and social media because most adults are already comfortable with email and social media. So when you go to get a new, when you go to put in a newsletter, it's, it's pretty user-friendly. It's very close to just writing an email. And you can bring in different, different infographics and links. So it'll be just about giving people time to go in and explore and play around with it.
Cool.
Any other questions? Okay, that's Parent Square. Would you like me just to keep going, Mr. Burke?
So thank, thanks Nicole, and now Nicole again, but this time for artificial intelligence.
Okay, so switching gears, we know that AI has been quite a hot topic. Mr. Haggott, you've brought it up a couple times just at different conferences. And that's really what's happening across the state. I too, anytime I'm going to any type of professional learning, this is a, this is definitely a hot topic. It's coming fast and furious. It's, it's changing the way people interact. And technology obviously is right at everyone's fingertips. So things like ChatGPT, that is AI, that's the most commonly used, they're, they're blocked from our network. They're, as far as cybersecurity, they're deemed unsafe in our school. Is that better? Is that better?
Yes.
So what we needed to do was almost wait until there was a program that was an educational platform, if you will. And so you've heard me mention EDLa 2D compliance. It's our responsibility as the district to make sure that the software and the program that we put in staff's hands and students' hands is safe on our network, right? And again, Mike Allen and his team oversee that work. So we started a few months ago looking at different vendors are coming out with educational-based AI. And after meeting with a few companies, we did decide on School AI. And I'll walk you through this here in a minute and just kind of show you the power behind it. But again, the premise is to interact with AI, to learn about AI, but to also use it to enhance our instructional spaces. And this, we did the same as Parent Square. We, we learned about it as an administrative team, decided on School AI to then bring forward to our district technology committee. Because once again, it's a nice cross-section of stakeholders. And there are a lot of staff tools, if you will, that really, those that have started using it are pretty excited about. And I'll show you a few of those. So this is actually School AI and I encourage you to just check out schoolai.com. It's a free website. You can simply make an account using your Gmail account and you have full access to it. We are looking at possibly purchasing what they call spaces. They're instructional spaces, which I'll show you here in a minute. So there's the free version and then there's the, the paid version that we can go through NAREC. But I'm just going to kind of show you the free version here first. Okay, so this is School AI. And here I'm going to just click Tools and this is really tools for staff. And so you can see here, they can have AI help them generate lesson plans, rubrics, text levelers, individual education plans, IEPs, newsletters, behavior plans. And if it's not here, then they can simply go to Build Your Own and generate something specific that they're looking for. And you can see, this is my account and I have 31 documents. And again, I am far from an expert. I have been forcing myself to dabble in it. It is a little uncomfortable at first, but you get to be a better, what they call a prompt writer. And the better your prompt, the better piece of work it generates. So I'm just going to walk you through something quickly here. So if I go to Lesson Plan and Generate, I can select my grade. And we can just do grade four, the water cycle is what they have in here. And you'll see here additional details. If I had time, I can put more details and then it's going to be more scripted to exactly what I want. You can actually add in New York State standards. So I could go into my science standards and, and put them into here. So just for the sake of time, I'm just going to show you, that took me about three seconds to say grade four water cycle. And here I have a lesson plan that has my grade level, my objectives, has the common core standards, the materials that I will need, the introduction, direct instruction, guided practice, independent practice, assessment, closure, extensions, differentiation. So within, I would say that was less than 10 seconds, you have a lesson plan at your fingertips. And so then what I can do as the teacher is because I'm obviously the one that's knowledgeable of my subject area, I can then go in, this becomes my document completely. And I can complain or I can erase, I can edit, I can do whatever I want with this lesson plan. So there is a little bit of fear of why would I want a computer generating my lesson plan? I'm the expert in the field. And when you listen to the company, they believe that the teachers are the experts in the field. They, they just want to give you a tool that instead of spending an hour writing a lesson plan on the water cycle, you can take 10 seconds and then review it and edit and change it and make it what you want. So that is a quick way to do a lesson plan. And I'll show you another tool here. If I go to IEP and I can tell you, our special ed teachers on the tech committee were very excited about this. It takes a long time to write IEPs. And again, the more descriptive your prompts are of your student, but I will just try to quickly put something in, grade five, let's do visual impairment. And then...
And, and this is what you were explaining about the more skilled you get at inputting the data, the better, in this case, the IEP is going to be?
Yes. So for the sake of time, I did that really quickly. But these teachers that know these students, they're going to know very specific how to describe those, that student. And then again, generate and you'll see how quickly it's going to do this IEP. And this by, by no means is the final product. Then the teacher reviews it and goes in and makes it what they want it to be. And obviously it needs to align with the special education department standards. Really the sell here is that these are tools that help teachers buy back time. So then they can be with their students, right? Like that's the big sell of it. Instead of being in front of the computer and doing lesson plans and IEPs, this quickly gives them the tools to do that so they can spend their time with their students. So this is, these are the staff tools. And again, if it's not listed, you can simply build your own. And you can be very specific how long you want it. I played around with something and it kept giving me like two-page documents and I wanted one paragraph. You can write one paragraph about, again, the more specific you are on your prompt, the more you're going to get the outcome you're looking for. So the spaces is the instructional space, which I was speaking of before. I'm going to do find a space. These are already created spaces. And this is the library that is ever-growing right now. And so I will simply, you can, you can be very specific, do grade level, subject area. Yesterday was Juneteenth, so I just thought we would jump into that. So here is already created space. So what happens is the, I don't need to generate or launch it, sorry. The teacher will have a QR code or just a code on the board. And this, if you're familiar with software like Kahoot, this is what students are used to. They put a code in. And if you all were my students, you would either use the QR code or this site. And so I'll just pretend that I'm now being a student, basically. So now I'm acting as the student. And so this is my own very specific space to learn about Juneteenth. Meaning my screen no longer mimics anyone else in my classroom, but everyone is learning about Juneteenth. And then on the backend, my teacher can also see how people are progressing learning about Juneteenth. And so there's ways where questions can be embedded. And if it gets to a certain point where there's a lot of red flags, the teacher can see that. And they can actually freeze everyone's screen and reteach about the subject area. So reteach about Juneteenth. Or maybe they see, they can see the students' responses. They see one that is just top-notch exemplar. They again can freeze everyone, ask the students' permission, would you mind reading that, using that as an example? So it does still give control to the teacher. So here you'll see, you can either read it or you can listen. Perhaps the sound is not working, but it will read it to the student. And this says, hey there, let's dive into the origins of Juneteenth. Did you know it originated on June 19th, 1865, when enslaved people in Texas finally learned they were free? What would you like to know more about? And I'm just going to say, how do people celebrate? And quickly I have a response. So that's my own question as a learner. I may be sitting next to a peer and they have some very different question to ask. So now this space is created for me and my interactions and my interests. And so it gives me more information and how would you like to celebrate? And one of them says picnic, so maybe I'll say, I want to have a picnic. And so again, you can see this interaction, that sounds like a great idea. What foods would you like to include in your picnic? And I really liked, the person doing the demo was a former teacher and principal. And he said, let's be honest, if you're teaching seventh graders, they're probably going to write something not having to do with Juneteenth, right? And you can't have eyes on all of the 20 computers. And so he, he did something like, you know, order me a pizza now, right? So we could put that. Something completely off task, it's not part of the subject that we're, we're talking about. But then you can see the language kind of redirects, I'm here to talk about Juneteenth. And he even used, I think he used name-calling, right? Like, and said something and put it in. And it quickly again redirects and that teacher sees it as a red flag. So when, when staff saw this part, they almost felt like they were going to be able to almost multiply themselves in the classroom, right? Like if you were sitting with a group of eight kids, having a small group, then you know others are, are interacting with the information at their own pace, at their own interest level. So they're exploring this right now. If, this is a pre-made space, but you can certainly make your own space. And Sidekick is basically an AI tutor. And I have a son at home that just went through algebra. And I really haven't done algebra since I was in algebra in high school myself. So we explored and used Sidekick a little bit and put in some algebraic expressions. And it never gave us the answer. It talked him step by step. Like, have you tried moving the y on the other side of the equation? Like it, it really did try to tutor him through that and tutor myself through it. So again, that would be a really great tool for, for students to use and teachers to feel like they have instant access to support. One thing our ELA teachers that are exploring this is the essay grading because it gives feedback. And so for example, a sixth-grade teacher was saying, 60 essays takes me a really long time to do. And I want to give really great feedback because I know it's important. She said, I started using this and within minutes I had feedback. And then I got to go back into every single feedback and I could fine-tune it and change it. But again, it just was at such a faster pace. And she said, then I felt like I was actually giving that gift of, of the feedback to students while not taking hours of my time at home trying to grade those and give that feedback. When you hear about AI, there obviously, I'm sure you've heard, is a concern of plagiarism. And at the high school, especially with our IB program, the ethical component, we do purchase something called Turn It In. And so when you receive an essay, you can put that same essay through Turn It In and it will be able to tell you if it was AI-generated. And so I know our teachers are thankful to have that on the other end of this. School AI is, is, is very new. Those that are kind of playing around with it are mostly from our tech committee. So again, we're going to offer just optional trainings over the summer, optional time on opening days and then optional time on our half-days in the fall. Whereas Parent Square, we're definitely, you know, we're full implementation. This will be more of an optional, try it out and see what do you think. The reason we're choosing to do it this way is AI is here and we know that and our students are using it. And this gives us a safe and secure educational platform to be able to put in our students and our staff's hands. Any questions about School AI?
So I, I think what I heard you allude to is that it's optional and you're not, you're not going, you're not, I don't want to say it this way, but I'm going to, you're not forcing it down any teacher's throat to use this resource?
Correct. Often when it's new educational technology and stuff, that's our approach. It takes, it takes some folks using it and liking it and then growing it organically, right? Like if I love something and then I tell my colleague about it, there's that natural buy-in. This is so new that we want people to not be afraid of it or dislike it right out of the gate. We want them to be able to go and explore and see how it can change their, their instructional environment. Any other questions? Okay.
And Ms. Charleston, would you also talk about the Professional Learning Plan, please?
So each year annually, we have to review the Professional Learning Plan. As always, our Professional Development Committee is responsible for reviewing this. And we chose to do the same thing as last year. And the language in this Professional Learning Plan is somewhat general and overarching that allows us to really just leave it alone. And what I mean by that is if I go to page seven, and I know this is linked in your agenda as well, but really the meat of it is the objectives of the Professional Development Plan. And when we looked at those, and I didn't explicitly look at just this, this plan with the PDC, but these, these are the conversations that we're continually having as a team. And really that SEL component remains, you know, supporting students and their mental health. And then also looking at instructional strategies and student engagement. We continue to talk about attendance at school and we want to create environments where students want to be. They want to come to school and they want to engage with their learning. And then also just continuing student-centered learning. We really want them to feel like they're more engaged. So this is the same document, just updated from last year. And the reason is we're going to continue to work on, much like Elise said, continuing the work that we have in place. Any questions on the Professional Learning Plan? Okay, last one.
Okay, and Ms. Charleston, if you'd also present on the PLC Climate Survey Data, please.
Okay, as the board is aware, once a year annually, we give our professional learning, I'm sorry, PLC Climate Survey Data, I almost said the PDC, but PLC Climate Survey Data. So last year, Mr. Brady presented the top five assets and the five, top five risk factors. And so that's what I'll be doing again this evening. But what we did is we kept it as a comparison, just so you can see what was highlighted last year as well. Of note, the staff, there was 290 responses of the students. There was 1,112 responses and this is given in grades five through 12. And there was 135 responses from family members. So from that, you can actually see a lot of continuation of what we saw last year. And that being the top five assets, students have adults that they trust and can go to if they're having trouble. School leaders continually walk around and are often seen in our school. Our school believes in and supports diversity. And students have access to advanced courses, special programs if interested. And the way we got those top assets, if you'll look up at the top here, it was shown, they were ones that were shown up in the top five in more than one category of either staff, students or families. Meaning different representatives are saying that yes, that should be amongst our top five. And of note, support staff was given a survey, just their questions are different. So we couldn't include that in this data, but we are sharing that with the directors and the supervisors so they can review their PLC Climate Survey as well. And just like last year, the specific data was given to each of the principals that they can review with their staff. I know we used it quite a bit in our, our school improvement team meetings at the high school level this year. And we used it at our DEI committee meetings a lot this year. And really just looking at that data and how we can continue to improve. So speaking of improving, our top possible risks, risk factors. Students in our school take responsibility for their actions. Student behavior does not interrupt learning time. Students are not picked on about their sexuality. So those are the top three risk factors that showed up once again, more than once amongst staff, students or families. So in talking with Mr. Burke, just like we did last year, we will use those risk factors when writing our district goals. So we can emphasize the training. So late summer, early fall, we really look at our grant funds, meaning our title funds. We look at professional learning and we tie it into our district goals, which is built upon feedback like this. We look at professional learning and we tie it into our district goals, which is built upon feedback like this. So very similar information, but very important information. This is our student voice, this is the voice of our families, this is the voice of our staff. And so we're going to use this to drive our work going into the next school year. Questions about the climate survey data?
I, I did have a question. Um, does this data get segregated across any of our schools or is it all just district?
Yes. So, uh, we review district together as an administrative team and we use that holistic data to create the district goals together. But then I provide the very specific building data to each of the principals and then they can do their own building goals with their building teams. So Mr. Burke and I kind of work with the admin team at the district level and then each principal leads the work at each of the buildings. And additionally, we're going to provide the same information to the directors for the support staff this year as well.
Nicole, is it possible for us to print this? Like I'm a person, I like to have printed paper and when I was trying to do that, I think I didn't have administrative ability to do that. If you, if you wouldn't mind.
I did get an email that you requested and I did, um, change my settings. So you should be able to. And if not, don't hesitate to email me and I can send something, Ashley can help me get it to you, um, when you stop in or we can send it in the mail.
Okay, perfect.
Yes, I apologize about that.
No, that's okay. No, that's okay.
Okay, I think that's it. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Charleston. Okay, for the rest of my portion, um, this evening, the board is going to be asked to consider approval of the 2024-25 school physician contract with Messina Hospital. This is at exactly the same dollar amount as it was previously at $45,000. And that provides all of our, um, student physicals as well as our physicals for, required physicals for, um, employees, in particular our bus drivers. Any questions on that contract? Okay, likewise, I'm going to be asking that the board approve the contract for the teacher of the visually impaired. Again, very similar to prior years. And you do have a copy of that. Any questions on the TVI contract? Okay, we are also being asked to approve retroactively three bus utilization requests. One was from Trinity Catholic on June 7th, they went to the Robert Moses State Park. We are being asked for a retroactive for Madison Grade Three, having gone to Ottawa to the Canadian Nature Museum. And another for Grade Four from Madison that went to Upper Canada Village. Also asking that the board consider the professional learning stipends, uh, for participants at $25 per hour and for, um, presenters at $50 per hour. And for a presenter, $25 per hour for preparation of the materials. And the final request is for the CS tutoring rates at $60 per hour for one child and $90 per hour for two or more children. And again, we do get reimbursed on those rates by the county. Any questions or concerns with any of those requests? And I would also just like to thank Elise Hoxey as our ex officio. Um, she has been a remarkable resource as a first-year superintendent. And I'm also looking very forward to next year working with Isabel. Um, and I'm also very happy that Elise is going into education and will be a teacher. And I have a funny feeling that you will see her again, probably in a number of years. But I'm hoping that Elise, as I've already indicated to her, will be sitting right here where I am as your superintendent in the future. I think she has every, every capacity to do that. So Elise, congratulations on your coming graduation and I know you'll do great things.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Burke. Uh, we'll move on now to recommended actions. Uh, first is the, uh, rather lengthy consent agenda. Um, are there any, uh, items from the consent agenda that any board member would like to have pulled out for, um, further review questions, comments, et cetera?
Yes, I'd like to have the budget transfer report pulled, please.
Okay. Are there any other consent agenda items, uh, that anyone would like pulled out? Okay, uh, hearing none. Uh, I would call for a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Uh, any comments or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that carries. Uh, okay, let's, um, move on to other items for action and we'll start with, uh, the budget transfer report. Could I have a motion for approval of the budget transfer report, please?
So moved.
I'd like to have some discussion. Uh, yeah, I know. I'm seconding it.
A second, uh, any discussion?
Mm-hmm. So, um, when I was going through the budget transfer report, I noticed that, um, under item 2388 dated 5/6/24, cover food. And that was $75,000. And then I noticed on the next page, 2395 dated 5/22/24, cover Renzi and Hobart. And that was $27,060. Um, so I'm wondering what all of these, I mean, together that's like over $100,000 going to, I'm assuming that's food service. And I'm wondering why that is happening in the budget trans- transfer?
Yeah, so that's to cover the end-of-year invoices for, I mean, the, 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 um, so that's to come up, uh, cafeteria budget, um, each of them, uh, cafeteria. So they have money in their budget, we're just, it's, it's, it's on it.
Okay.
Um, and we do get, we do get, um, state aid back on that.
Okay.
It, it's this year.
Okay, so they haven't gone over budget. You're not taking from someplace else. You're just moving from general fund, say, general fund into, okay, okay.
So you see the C goal.
Yes.
And then you see, so you're just taking one cafeteria goal and giving it to the, the, the line.
Okay. And how does that compare to last year at the same time, approximately? Okay. Okay, okay. I don't recall it being that big. Okay, and then the other thing, I just wanted to make sure, um, cover crossing guards, was that the agreed upon amount? Was the 13,000 for the crossing guards? We, I remember we made an agreement with the, the village and that they were only going to pay for two and we had to pay for the rest. And was that the, cause that's, I don't remember it being 13,000, but I could be wrong.
I have to look at the contract, but that was for the, um, the remaining.
They were, they were going to do three and we were going to do three? Is that how it worked out or?
They did. They were going to do maybe two.
Yeah. And we were doing the remainders? Okay.
Um, I don't believe, I, I have to double check, I don't know if it's a specific amount of setting, just their salary would be better.
Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Uh, Trish, just back on the question that you had about the food.
Yeah.
We have seen a considerable increase across the board on our food costs despite the fact that we know we obviously buy into the cooperative, uh, purchasing. But milk, I believe alone, we saw an increase of over $500 per month of, just in terms of raw costs.
Okay.
So we've seen that, we've seen the price of chicken increased dramatically, um, any of your protein-type products. The price is just, it, it seems like there's no end in sight. Um, the one thing that I think is still positive is that our reimbursement rate as being a, as, um, the CEP-type school where we're getting that money back for feeding all of our students, it still exceeds our costs. So we're still, we should still be in good shape. Um, but again, we know that those costs are increasing. And it's a, it's a complaint that we're hearing across the board from superintendents, but it's really no difference in what we're seeing at home.
Right. And, and are we going to next school year be receiving the same amount in reimbursement?
We should be receiving at least the same amount per meal.
Okay.
And I believe there is an index that, that may come with that as well to, to increase it.
Okay.
I'll get that answer for you for July.
Okay.
Is that because we're offering free meals to all students right now?
I'm sorry.
Is that because we're offering free meals to students right now?
Yes, breakfast and lunch.
Have we served more meals as well?
Yeah, our, our, the number of meals has increased dramatically. Um, I think I've shared that with the board mid-year. You know, we were up to 300 meals per day between breakfast and lunch. And that's why we've increased some of our hours at some of the cafeterias.
That's right.
And also like at junior high, we're going to be adding, um, I believe it's one or two hours in the morning that way. Because right now at the junior high, we are getting a lot, and quite a number of breakfast out, but it's a cold breakfast. And the goal here is to provide a hot breakfast, more nutritious meal, so.
So that's going to continue next year, that the state will reimburse for every student?
Yes, and I, and I believe that's a two to a three-year contract or a five, I think it's three.
Okay.
I, I just saw a contract with the customers. And it is, he's paying for three of them and, um, in the contract it said not to receive, uh, the, uh, the.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions concerning the budget transfer report? We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? That carries. Uh, okay, uh, moving on to, uh, the rest of the other items for action. First is the approval of the finance committee charter. Do I have a motion?
I didn't think we were doing that tonight, didn't?
No, it was the audit one that we're not.
Oh, okay, okay.
Do I have a motion for the approval of the finance committee charter? Do I have a second? Okay. Discussion, uh, I would like to ask for, uh, some wording to be stricken from this. When I drafted these, when I drafted this particular charter, uh, I was going off of the prior experience under Mr. Brady. And you will, those of you who were on the board, uh, when Mr. Brady was here, will remember that he would have at least a couple of what he called public forums on the budget during, say, February and March. Uh, they weren't public hearings, they were just simply informational forums. And when I, uh, drafted this charter, um, I took that as being a requirement. So, um, when, if you open up the, um, uh, the charter on your agenda, uh, under responsibilities, it says, uh, to develop a budget calendar for approval by the Board of Education, including required public forums. There is no requirement to have public forums. And I actually asked Mr. Burke about that this year when we were doing budget development and there were no public forums scheduled. And I questioned it and, uh, received assurances and was pointed to, um, education law that said, no, you have to have a public hearing, you don't have to have public forums. So what I would request is that we strike the word "public forums" under responsibility, uh, responsibilities. And also, um, where it talks about the, uh, the, um, the, there are a couple of other, uh, places that, uh, where it talks about, uh, public forums being held in February and March. I'd like to also strike those and just get rid of any, um, language that has to do with public forums because that is not necessary. So, um, I think what we need to do is, um, call for a vote on the, on the, um, charter as it's worded here. Hopefully you won't approve it and then I will ask for, um, the revised wording and, and you hopefully will approve it. So, uh, we have a motion and a second on the table for the, um, draft finance committee charter. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, that makes me feel better. I would, uh, call for a motion to approve the finance committee charter with any references to public forums taken out of the document.
So moved.
Thank you. Um, all in favor? Any opposed? Again, I thank you. Um, next is approval of, uh, the Board of Education meeting schedule for the following school year.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Great, next is the approval of the 24-25 school physician contract with Messina Hospital.
So moved.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Opposed? Uh, next is, uh, approval of the 2024-25 Teacher of the Visually Impaired Services contract.
So moved.
Comments or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? A, uh, approval of the bus utilization request from Trinity?
So moved.
Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? And approval of, uh, the two out-of-county field trips for, to the Canadian Nature Museum and Upper Canada Village.
So moved.
Any comments or questions? Uh, I think we, we had a discussion, Mr. Burke, about, uh, looking at the possibility of the, these not having to be board-approved in the future, correct?
Yes, I'm going to bring it up to the policy committee for review next year.
Okay. Uh, for now, all in favor? And any opposed? That carries. Approval of professional learning stipends?
So moved. Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Next is approval of the SEIS tutoring rates.
So moved.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Opposed? Approval of an MOA with the Messina Federation of Teachers regarding summer schools, or sorry, summer social workers.
So moved.
Any comments, questions? All in favor? And approval of personnel items, turn it over to Mr. Burke.
We can take that one out now?
Oh.
To make him more comfortable.
Do you, do you want to, do you want to take that one out?
We can.
Okay, so I'm, I'm, I would ask for appro, for the board to consider personnel numbers one through 25 and 27 through 28. And that we consider number 26 separately, please.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
And I would also ask the board to consider the approval of item number twenty-six.
So moved.
Comments, questions? All in favor? Any opposed? And any abstentions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Burke. Next is items for future agendas. Anybody have anything they would like to have presented to the board for their consideration, or discussion, or anything at all?
I'm curious about where we are with regard to the program that we were going to set up that was going to be a precursor to BOCES with the ninth and tenth graders. And we had several different people who were providing instruction, and I just wondered, how is that going? Are we continuing with it? Is it, has it been successful?
If we're referring to the cooperative program between four different schools, no, it fell apart mid-year. And part of it was space, part of it was the hurdles of trying to create something like that as a group of four. So it has fallen apart. I don't know that it will be revisited anytime in the near future. However, I will say, one of the things that we are talking about as a group of eighteen districts now, and we're going to be hearing a whole lot more about it in the near future from State Education Department, and that is regionalization. So that was one of the hurdles. How do four schools come together outside of a BOCES to create a nine-ten program? Where do you house it? A number of factors came in there. But right now, the State Education Department is working on talking about regionalization, especially as we begin talking about the Rockefeller Institute study on foundation aid. So I think that we're going to see some dramatic changes in the next few years. Regionalization right now is a very difficult concept. There's not a whole lot of allowance for it outside of school mergers, and we have had very few mergers since the nineteen fifties. I'm actually, I was very happy to have Mr. Burns as a guest speaker on last Monday with our Monday Luncheon Club, and he talked about the change in education, where we went from over ten thousand school districts at the turn of the twentieth century, and then down to approximately seven hundred, which is what we've had since the nineteen fifties, and there have been very few mergers. So we now know with our declining enrollment around the state of New York, our declining finances, that something has to change. And we're going to see some recommendations out of that. And again, that parlay's, I think, very well into that concept of a nine-ten program. The other part, too, quite honestly, is we're facing a major shortage in teachers. You know, we look at the teacher vacancies that we still have open, so to try to free teachers up to teach a nine-ten program would be nearly impossible at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other items for future agendas?
I've got something, Paul, and it goes back to the language study, of course. Nicole organized a very well-organized meeting, thank you for that. I've wondered if there were any follow-ups with that, Nicole. We talked about maybe bringing some language study into sixth grade on a limited basis. Or is anything going to move forward with that for the next school year? So I'm having trouble hearing you, seventh grade? Yes, absolutely. Yes, yes. Will there be any follow-up to look into that?
Yeah, the thought was, we'd already done the student budget, so that was less, um, back in, I think, how it was reduced. They were, they're not even funded.
Okay. Okay.
It would require two teachers, one of the teachers and the other teacher, as well as looking at the space.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Nicole.
Anyone else with items for future agendas? I was planning to do at least an abbreviated presentation for you tonight on the board, our board self-evaluation. I do think it's important that we, you know, for matters of accountability to the community, that we talk about that. So I think I'm going to punt that to next month, and I'll plan on walking you through at least a shortened version of that. And in the meantime, I would certainly invite you to spend a little bit of time with the links that I sent you the other day by email, and the same for the board goals assessment for this year. I did want to go through those as well, but we've got birthdays and anniversaries and everything else here at the table tonight. So I want to let, I want to get you out of here. Is there anything else for future consideration? Okay, hearing nothing. There is no press here, we'll forego the communications from the public and press. I would, and I do apologize for this, but I would like to have a short executive session to discuss the superintendent evaluation. And there would be no action taken after that session, so. With that, I would call for an adjournment, a motion for adjournment? All in favor? Again, there will be no, no action taken after the executive session. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tusa, for this evening's comfort. It was a good idea.